To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We lost two individuals within the last couple of weeks that were a big part of this school district. One was Barbara Chapman, who was our director of people's services for ten years plus. And the other one was Ben Bragg. I had the opportunity to attend Ben's funeral. And family members gave a eulogy. And the common theme of those eulogies were his love for his family, his love for the school district and the children of this school district. And the biggest thing was his love for this country. And I think, you know, what he was able to give back to the students of our school district and our community over the years will never be able to replace that. I think his inspiration led some of our students, our graduates, to go on in the career in the armed services. I think that was because of Ben and what he stood for and how proud he was to serve his country. So let's have a moment of silence for both of those individuals. Thank you. Open the media to public comment. Okay, we have a special presentation this evening. First would be student of the month. Over to you, Matt.
All right.
A little clearer?
This month, when I was looking for that perfect person to recognize as student of the month, I actually asked some teachers if they could give me some names. And one name that came to the top very quickly was Grace Porter. So if Grace can come up here, I'm going to read a statement. And I recognized Grace. She's one of our third grade students. She is very responsible. We had this conversation in our office the other day. And she was beamy-eyed and very smiley. So I'm going to read this again so everyone here can hear it and see and hear how wonderful you are, okay? So Grace is very responsible, she's motivated, and she's a passionate student. She comes to school every day with a smile and an excitement for learning. And she's dedicated to going above and beyond. She's a model student who sets a positive example for her peers. She works hard not only for herself but also with helping others. She's a natural leader in class. And she takes the lead in any group situation. And she is always encouraging others with their thoughts and her ideas. She's patient, she's kind-hearted, and she demonstrates this daily on the use of her words in our school, her actions and her relationships with everyone in her class and in our hallways. Her work ethic is an inspiration to her classmates. She's truly a wonderful young lady. And she, we know, will continue to excel both academically and socially. So Grace, we are so proud of you. Dr. Araka and I, when we talked to you the other day, we told you how we wish we had more students that rose to the occasion and met those words that your teachers wrote. So thank you so much. We recognize you as the student of the month for November, or first, sorry, December. It's almost still November. We're going to get a picture.
It's going fast.
Mom and dad, do you want to come up? It's all right. It's something extra that I don't normally count, but I have these all taken up for this week, so you get to take that. Thank you.
Cassidy, come out. Our student of the month for Highland Middle School is Cassidy Whetling. This is Cassidy. Congratulations. And I additionally, I as well have some comments from our teachers that I'll read. Cassidy is a model student. She is always kind and shows determination in classroom. That's such an important word in what we're doing with kids these days. Her attitude is always positive even when given a challenging task. Cassidy is always prepared for class. She participates in discussions and puts effort into studying outside of the classroom to help her succeed. There's something right there. Extra work. And Cassidy is a great student who always arrives with a positive attitude. When she struggles, she consistently asks questions and makes corrections. A great role model for her peers. Her hard work shows and it pays off. And a personal comment, as I stand outside the middle school on a regular basis and greet children when they come in every morning, it's always the biggest smile and always, "Good morning, Mr. Whetzel, how are you?" And which is such a great way to start off a school day. Really proud of you. Congratulations for being our student of the month.
Lauren? Come on up.
It's my honor to announce Highland High School December 2018 student of the month, Lauren Weiss. Lauren Weiss is a Highland High School student of the month. Lauren personifies the spirit and energy that we'd like to see in all of our students. Lauren, to list just some of her involvements in school, Lauren coordinates the annual Deep Pink Volleyball Game for breast cancer awareness. Lauren has been on the varsity volleyball team for three years. In addition, she volunteers her time to be the statistics keeper for wrestling. And she also is a photographer for the yearbook. When asked to describe Lauren, her teachers used the following adjectives: motivating, outgoing, organized, reliable, supportive, inclusive, and relentlessly positive. She's also been described as a quote mover and a shaker. Disobvious. And she also has a dynamic presence if you ever had a chance to talk to her or meet her, she certainly does. When I asked Lauren about her school involvement, she said, and I quote, "I would volunteer more if wrestling didn't take over my life." English teacher Josh Tatum said of Lauren, "She embodies the familial atmosphere that we strive to create at Highland High School." And I agree with Mr. Tatum absolutely. Congratulations to Lauren and her family. Fix myself.
Thank you so much.
Hi, mom. Hey, Dan. Middle school academic presentation?
Yes, Mr. Rizal's going to get started right ahead. Good evening. I'm here to talk a little bit about our interdisciplinary lesson plan that we ran this past quarter. It's funny because this morning, one of my colleagues, Carol Delia, who refers to me as the brother she wished she never had, and I refer to her as the big sister I always wished I had, she asked me, "What are you going to talk about in the board presentation tonight?" So I told her I was going to tell them a story, a story about how this came about. And it started over the summer in conversations with an English teacher that we have in another grade, Mark Candiari. He started talking about interdisciplinary lessons. And I'd never done interdisciplinary lessons. There's something that you read about in your college textbooks. There's things that you see, you know, charter schools and magnet schools doing. And we'd go to presentations, you'd hear about them, which you'd never do them yourself. So this, as soon as school started this year, I started getting in Carol's ear and I said, "We really need to do an interdisciplinary lesson," but we didn't know what we were going to do. And I begged her to work with me and to try and collaborate through this process. And it wasn't until about late September that Cody Weaver brought up a lesson plan that he had created on invasive species. And in looking at that, I think that was the point where I realized this is to start off to a good interdisciplinary lesson because we can incorporate both social studies, science, math, ELA, and our special classes and bring them in and all work together on one common goal. So Carol and I started working on it, and it actually became quite fun. And in doing so, we created lesson plans and we started to talk about how this project evolved. And then we took a chance one day and brought it up at a team meeting. And our colleagues jumped at the opportunity to work on it. Kevin Brenney jumped on and started teaching writing on invasive species in his classroom. He went over presentations with them. Cody and myself, Carol, our math teacher, ran lesson plans, three-day lesson plans on invasive species and how they tie into math. So we had this massive unit going on for about three or four months. We had incredible support from our administrators who gave us half-days to work with the students and do writing blisters with them, where we would have the students with not very much structure going from classroom to classroom, working with different teachers in different areas and being somewhat controlling. I remember going out into the hallway and going, "All right, where are our students? Where are they hiding?" And I would walk into a classroom and they were working. And I'd look at Mr. Brenney and he'd give me the thumbs up like, "You're working." And I'd go down, run down to Delia's, and they're down there working. And then I'd come back upstairs and in Weaver's classroom, they were working. And they were working hard to accomplish this goal. So defying all my, at that point in time, all my fears but meeting our expectations that we had. Tonight, I've brought two of our students to present their theme on mugwort. And part of this presentation, what they had to do was come up with a four-minute presentation involving researching these common themes of New York invasive species. And the research was amazing to see these students start off looking at scholarly articles, looking at media sources, using their library media special to look up different scientists. And then what really became amazing was something that I didn't expect, where our students started to email college professors and scientists for the New York City DUC and for the DEP. And then those professionals got back to them. So it created this collaboration. So without further ado, I won't introduce them, they will introduce themselves, but they're going to present on the mugwort.
So, hi, I'm Devin Dawes and this is Jacob Bishop. And we are here to present mugwort, also known as Artemisia vulgaris. So pretty much mugwort is a plant that came from Europe and Asia. And no one really knows how it came to America, but the most popular theory is that it came through ship ballast. For those of you who don't know, ship ballast is a little area filled with water under the cargo in a ship. In America, it grows on road sides, pastures, and other disturbed areas. A few things about mugwort is that there are about 200,000 seeds practically microscopic to the size inside each plant. If you try to cut it down, it can regrow from as little as two centimeters of root. They have these properties that are called alilopathic, which is where it gives off chemicals that change how the other plants live. And lastly, it can grow to about five feet tall, which is about to my neck. And as I explained, the weed, it spreads super fast through wind and other very easy-to-move forces due to its tiny size and the giant amount. Since it's so easy to regrow, it's practically impossible to get rid of it. The chemicals killing off the other plants clearly are not the best traits in the world. And lastly, due to it being so tall, a lot of beneficial plants end up not getting the sunlight they need to survive.
Uglab or lacrobol. Unlike most plants, mugwort has no fubut. This means that it has no consumers to help reduce its population. Because it has no consumers, it can just hit an exponential growth with nothing to stop it from growing. To stop it from growing, farmers used to feed it to sheep because this is one of the only animals that could eat it. However, it only helped our digestive health and did not give them any real other benefits. Bio-destruction. For those of you that don't know, biodiversity is the amount of organisms living in a certain area. Because mugwort, because mugwort has no consumers and hence that exponential growth, it is very easy for it to kill off many plants. Because there's so much of it, it can completely blanket an area, blocking out all the sunlight to an area because it is so tall. It also gives off those alilopathic properties and chemicals that can kill off many plants. These plants have many pollinating properties. These pollinating properties are very useful for bees. And because mugwort is killing off these plants, many bees in New York are down there.
In the graph that we concluded in this slide, every county that is colored green is where there was a sighting of mugwort. This is a very recent graph, only from July 13th of this year. So clearly, you can find it a lot in the northern, central, and southern parts of New York, but not really on the western side due to it coming in through the coast. It affects the Hudson Valley quite a lot, but it's also incredibly, an incredibly big problem to the states surrounding us.
Also?
So surprisingly enough, mugwort is actually great for your health. It's used in teas and as a spice in Asia. It helps with your bone health, stomach health, works as an anti-anxiety and anti-depression. It works for anti-anxiety, anti-depression, and it can help cycle your menstrual cycle. It's, I've heard that it's incredibly delicious. Unfortunately, I haven't tried it myself. A couple of other neat facts that aren't quite necessary about it is that it's, it can help induce lucid dreams and it can be used as an alternative to beer hops. In places where we don't want it to grow, we can use chemicals to trap it, kind of like a boa constrictor, until it has nowhere to grow.
To sum it up, mugwort is an invasive weed that completely takes over and wipes out an ecosystem. Our best way to control mugwort is to farm it and kill it using chemicals. Our proposal to kill mugwort is to work with local farms, brewers, and many restaurants to help incorporate it as an alternative to beer hops, a spice, many other different things that it can be used as for humans, as nothing else we have used as mugwort.
Here are all the sources that we got our information from. Now we'd like to open up to questions. Are you on Science 1BAD? We plan on joining. Unfortunately, it's not open to our grape like it.
Has there been any, have you seen any mugwort here in Highland or at the rail trail? I mean, we've got some great wetlands here. And I get concerned about them. And that map looked like we were kind of in the zone.
Yeah. It isn't found in Ulster specifically that common. I'd actually checked the site where we have gotten the graph from, and there were only two sightings of mugwort in Ulster County, though it has been seen a lot in more southern counties. Like, it's a very big problem in Kingston. In Highland, I've heard of a couple of kids in town, like when we had been discussing our plan, saying that they had seen it on like the sides of, like the Zirconic, for example. But it's not really anywhere specifically in Highland as of right now.
Thank you. Good thing it's not on our school property. Our director's facilities would be in big trouble. Let's go and see right now. Very well done. Well done.
Great job.
Another round of applause. I'm simply going to close it like this. I went and saw six, seven different presentations. And this is, what you saw is not the exception. We had such a great response from kids and they were so engaged. I walked into classrooms so many times to saw them, and saw them working. And I saw kids glued to their computers doing their presentations, writing, researching. It was really amazing to watch this happen. And I want to say to you that things that are, some things are really important. I've been to a professional learning communities conference. This came from that work that teachers needed to find the way to get this done. And that's what happened here. And the conferences that we've been able to send our teachers to, project-based learning conferences, inquiry-based science conferences, all of this stuff goes into what you've just seen. So that's, that's the stuff you guys are supporting us getting done with kids right there. That is so fantastic. Just the research credits that they showed and how to write it and how to present it, it's all coming together. It's fantastic. You guys did a great job.
If I may, I just do want to thank the administration and certainly the faculty in really providing these opportunities because, I mean, look at these kids bloom and they really shined up there for sure. And I'm sure they all did back at the school. So thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the teachers who came to support the students tonight. So thank you very much. So I know you're certainly welcome to stay with some more presentations, but I know you might have some homework to do. So don't feel bad if you want to scoot out at this point.
You can't have that on our campus.
No, no, it's exactly what I.
2018 capital project from CS Arch. Tom, when you're ready. Came across the other deck.
Oh, yes, I'm fine. I'm fine.
They had rolling credits. Can't promise you rolling credits. Can't promise you mugwort. And hopefully you don't want that in our presentation, so. Well, welcome. I appreciate you allowing us to give you another update where we are with respect to your planning of your 2018 capital project. My name is Tom Ritson-Holler. I'm an executive principal at CS Arch. And I think I saw you, I think a month and a half or a couple of months ago. We're going to be doing these regularly so that you understand where we're at in the process and you can ask questions and certainly have all the input that you need going forward. I have Juliana from JZ Company with me as well.
Where's Juliana? Oh, there's Juliana.
She's observing the process. So she was instrumental in putting a lot of these graphics together. So with that, let's hopefully get started.
They sabotaged it on the way out.
We're going with a black color scheme. So while he's doing that, of course, just to give you a little bit of an update of what we have been doing, since the last update, I gave you an update of a lot of the different scope items. I'm going to re-review those tonight just so that other community members, if we're taking this or there's persons here that haven't seen the presentation and don't understand the scope, I do want to cover that scope. A lot of it will be very, very brief, but I do want to focus on two of the items. Thank you very, very much. Two of the items, which of course is the replacement of the roof over the library because that's a very key feature that we're going to be doing, as well as the improvements to the site here at the high school. So a little bit of background, of course, the bond issue was approved by the voters this past May. And the scope was really identified through items in the VCS. Some remaining work from the previous capital project that was not completed. And in some cases, we added some of that work to also facilitate making sure we're maximizing our building. And we want to get every ounce of money from the state education department. So that's always important. So starting with some of the proposed scope of work, district-wide, we're doing exterior lighting. And that's of course to make improvements for safety and security. We're doing door key for faculty and staff to allow proper accessibility to the buildings. And so this is going to be throughout the building. In this facility for the central administration, we're going to be doing some additions to or some improvements to the HVAC system that serves this building. Right now, it's served in two different zones, either by fin tube or by a split radiation system. And so what we're going to be doing in the next articles, what we're going to be doing is going with rooftop units. We're going to be bringing the heated and cooled air down and in some cases, replacing the ceiling systems along with that new system to provide for the proper eating, cooling of these areas. So a much more comfortable environment. And certainly the systems are going to be a lot more efficient as well. So this is something that is part of that process. So I'm sure everybody's interested in the middle high school campus. Of course, you know that there are a lot of traffic and safety concerns with how people ingress and egress this campus, both for student drop-offs or people coming into park as well as the busing, the bus ingress and egress from the campus. So we spent a lot of time looking at how that works at dismissal time and at pickup time to understand what the relevant issues would be. I know this was also something that was discussed with one of the former bond issues as part of that project. And I think that portion, which is why it didn't get done, that bond issue for that first time was defeated. So we looked at that. So I'm going to talk with you about the traffic. The sewer pump upgrades, I'm not really going to belabor that. We are going to be upgrading that system. And then we're going to, I'll talk a little bit about the tennis court rehabilitation. So the first diagram I'm going to show you is a concept that's extremely similar, it's almost identical, to the one that was put forth in that previous bond issue. And so what this does is presents bringing apparent drop-off zone in an initial loop at the front of the school with pathways to get to the front entry. There's also parking associated with that. This would be for visitors' parking, would also include parking for accessibility. And then you can see a secondary loop in front. So this would be removing the big sweeping one-way loopway. We would have a secondary loop. This loop would be for ingress and egress for drop-offs and pickups would be buses only. And so now we're looking at angled stacked bus system where the buses each have their own parking spot. They pull in, the students either egress the bus. In the morning, of course, they just pull curbside, the students get off and they leave because that's, they aren't coming all at once. In the evening, when the students are picked up, all of the buses stack into predetermined spots. The students actually get onto the buses and then they fold out. They drive up forward and then they proceed to go off campus. Certainly a much safer arrangement. The students are all accessing the buses curbside. Any traffic that would be coming around the buses would be behind the buses. But typically, that would be restricted to vehicular traffic. It would be buses only. Again, the whole objective is to separate out the student drop-off and pickup zone from the students exiting the buses and getting on the buses at the end of the day. So and then, of course, as you see, as we get further back, we're restriping this parking lot. We're actually directing the cars as to how they proceed through that parking lot. So that, again, the more structure we can put into the back of the parking lot, the safer a condition it's going to be for those that are utilizing that lot. We've restructured in front of the administration building here at the end of this wing, parking lot for the central administration, a walkway then all the way around. This front walkway, of course, has to be 10 feet. It's a minimum requirement to allow students to unload and load from to and from those buses. So a couple of things. So this is one concept. We're looking at two concepts right now. I'm going to show you the second one. So the first thing with this concept that is still concerning with, and we have to do a little bit more research, is that the queuing, one of the things we noticed is there's a significant amount of queuing with parents during drop-off and pickup of the students. So if we don't have a place to queue those cars, it's going to create congestion and congestion. So if we don't have a place to queue those cars, it's going to create congestion and backup. So right now, with this small throw leading into this parent drop-off loop, that may not be enough queue space for those vehicles. So that's still a concern. And here, if they back up, they're going to be backing up onto the main roadway. So we want to really look at that. We've looked at that at drop-off and pickup times. And that was one of the main concerns with the whole drop-off and pickup with the parents that was discovered. So that's something we're still looking at because this is not a lot of queue space. The other thing that is a little bit concerning and what we need to clarify with the county is this is a county road and we are changing the configuration, even though we have two cuts like we do now. This is a two-way cut and this is a two-way cut and we're adding a drive into the bus loop. Because we're changing the functions of these drives, we need to get permitted through the county to make sure that they're acceptable with that approach out onto the roadway which is controlled by the county. And although school districts are exempt from local zoning as a public school district, anytime we need a curb cut permit for change in use or change in how that functions, we have to go to the county and we have to secure that. So we have not done that yet, but we will. If this is the scheme that the board and the district feels is the most appropriate solution, we'll make sure that we secure at least a preliminary approval of that concept before we would move forward any further. So that's concept one. So the second concept you're going to see is very similar with one exception. So the second concept now takes that secondary loop and we're going to now actually remove a drive. So we're going to have all the ingress and egress here and that's going to come into the central bus loop. And so this is going to be buses only during the drop-off and pickups. It also does account for some parking, for some visitor parking up front, which would also be handicapped. And then we'll have striking across to the main entry. So you can see that's, now it's dedicated really to buses in the front. So for the parent drop-off pickup, those folks would be coming in and we would be using the outside of the parking facility for the queuing space because there's more than enough queue space in the back of the parking lot. They would run through here, run through this zone, and they would drop curbside right here. Students would traverse that walk and either come in this mid-door or in this main door for ingress and egress. And then the parents would continue off and exit. So there would be no backup at the main road. It completely separates the drop-off and pickup of, in vehicles with the drop-off and pickup in buses. So this is concept two. Parking would be strike the same. We'd still be directing, you know, people around. It wouldn't just be flat expanses of, we would limit the curving for Pete's use in plowing. These probably wouldn't be curved islands. We would probably do these as something else. We would still have green space, but the curves would be difficult for the plowing movements. But it would still restrict vehicles from accessing through them and around them. So this would be restrikted. And again, we pick up some parking here. So this parking would actually increase in capacity because we'll pick up parking here because we don't have the buses stacked in the afternoon. So in both schemes, the buses now get unloaded and loaded in the front. So right now, they unload in the front in the morning and they load in the back in the afternoon. So that's all going to be, all going to be located in the front. And then just two options to look at the drop-off with the parents in the front. And I'll go back to that so you can see the difference. To have that drop-off in the front, again, we need to really evaluate the queue distance that we have available. And then this would strictly be for parking in general or we have drop-off where we queue in the back and we drop students in this zone.
I'm curious, why, in the first instance, why do you have them going in both directions for the parent drop-off? Why not just make that two lanes, one way?
Yeah, this is one thing we could. We could look at this just being a one-way. And this could be one-way out. And I think that would improve it somewhat. You know, one-ways are certainly a lot easier. I think one of the concepts was if we could bring people in from different directions, it may not bottleneck as much. But we would have to prove that out. Additionally, when I spoke, when we speak to the county, the county may actually ask that we do traffic engineering. We don't know that right now. So that could be a question that they ask and we would have to do some counts to make sure that we're meeting their appropriate standards.
You would need the county permit for option two as well?
For option two, no, because we're actually, we'd actually be eliminating a curb cut.
Okay.
So we would, this would be a curb cut that would maintain in its existing configuration.
Tom, in option two, that option, would you need to have a canopy walkway going from drop-off to the main entrance?
Yeah, we actually talked about that. So that's something that is being explored, whether there would be a canopy out front. We certainly want to have a front feature, an entry feature, you know, and that's something I think would be nice. Maybe even a little feature that mimics it down here as well for the admin. So, you know, but we did talk when we reviewed these concepts initially about the thought of...
But the idea for the board and the public that most schools have this one point of student entry. So we have several points of student entry and for safety purposes, you really want just one point of entry. So both of these scenarios have one point of entry. And again, any change we make, whether it's these two or maybe a third or fourth option, there's going to be a learning curve and a change in thought of how you do it. So in this scenario, it's a little bit of a walk because if it's pouring rain and out, that's what it is. So you're going to be dropped off by admin, but then you got to walk, there'll be a sidewalk, the whole front of the building to get to the front door. That's if you're dropped off by a parent. So that's why we're talking about possibility. If we were going to do that, maybe it would be a covered walkway. If it was in the front, then they would just shoot right at the scene.
It's in the front, they just shoot across. Now, again, you know, I'm so focused on, you know, where do we have the conflict? Here, if it is in front, the students still have to cross the lane where the buses are. Now, it's not a terrible thing, but it is crossing a lane of traffic. Whereas, you know, with the second scheme, we're completely separating those two so that the students are never crossing a lane of traffic. They're either dropping off the bus onto the curb or they're dropping curbside here and walking up to the front door.
Out of curiosity, where would snow removal be for both options? Because I know as of right now, our snow removal is taking up a lot of student parking spots and that has actually been a discussion within the student body for the past, since the past snowstorm. And there's been less parking places.
I'm glad you asked that question because that is a very good question. So I think one of the things with this scheme is because we're going to be increasing the capacity of the lot in the back, we'll be able to reserve sections where we can take and pile snow in those areas and still not impact the parking like you would be losing today. So, you know, that's one of the benefits of getting some additional parking here. You know, we're kind of restrikting in certain areas to allow us to get as much parking on the site as possible. You know, we're going to get this strip up here which replaces this strip. Now this, when he's plowing, when Pete's plowing, I'm assuming they're going to push it across into this mid-zone and into this zone here.
How are we increasing the density of spaces in the back if we're adding green space?
Oh, we're adding green space to areas that were, you know, drives. So maybe you're parking in some of those areas that were drives. But this was all dedicated to the buses.
Where the buses are...
This is all dedicated to where the buses are. We're not going to pick up spaces.
Okay.
Yeah, where the buses park.
Yeah.
In looking at it, at this bird's eye view, a parent who's going to drop off so close to where they enter, we're going to have them looping around this whole big parking lot. Isn't there a better way to create a flow?
Well, you know, one of the, and that's why I say we got to explore a little bit. One of the options, I think, is coming through here and putting a drive lane through here so it's direction straight and they're not going all the way around. And that would be, you know, that would allow them, parents, to get to that point very quickly but still give us enough queue space so that we aren't going to bottleneck that whole process. So again, these are the preliminary concepts. We still have a lot to evaluate and work through with that. But I thought it was important to present those tonight. So that's a big piece of the work. Of course, you know, we're also looking at rehabilitating the tennis court. So here, we're looking at removing that existing athletic surface, looking at improving the drainage. And now we're looking at putting the multipurpose athletic turf in, the artificial turf in. And so we're talking about how it might get aligned for different venues and different practice venues. Obviously, this isn't the size of a full sports field, so this would strictly be for practice, but it could serve a lot of different purposes.
Tom, are you looking to increase the footprint of that or just continue with what's there?
Right now, this shows the existing footprint.
I think you're kind of locked in there.
It pretty much is. It pretty much is. Unless we wanted to, you know, relocate some of these other features or we wanted to even steal more away from the bus area, but we don't have the ability. We're already taking, you know, I'm getting to know. But I think when you see that expansion...
It's a pretty big space, so if we went with this and this became a practice field, you know, it would just be the opportunities for the spring sports, especially when it's still wet and it's in snow. I mean, really, all sports could use it, really. It's a pretty big area.
Yeah, it's a pretty big area. I think previous generations, it was like the area sized for like three tennis courts with all the space in between, so.
You know what's on the perimeter of that area? Is it fencing netting?
So we were showing chain link, new chain link fence all the way around. Certainly, we want to prohibit anyone to drive on it.
Yeah, and they would have lighting, would have evening lighting so that you could have practices at night. Yes, because the sun still goes down pretty early in the early spring.
Because it's so far in the back, we could actually do sports lighting for that. So you could use it in, you know, in the evening. Otherwise, it would just be general lighting and, you know, you need really true sports lighting to make sure that, you know, you're able to see balls coming at you. It's a different type and it's a different level of lighting that would need to be provided.
Would it still be tennis courts though?
No.
Or that's present tennis court and it's...
There'd be no tennis courts as there is no tennis courts now.
It would be multipurposes of fields, so lacrosse and soccer, you can practice football, you know, baseball. Okay, so I won't belabor this.
Any questions about the sewer pumps?
Any question about the sewer pump, so, yeah, it's just...
That goes one way. There's no two ways. Go in one way, goes out.
I have to show you all of it, so new controls, disconnects, alarms, everything. So it's a pretty comprehensive improvement of that facility. So now let's talk a little bit about the roof covering over the library. Of course, this is a, right now, it's called a cowl wall system. It's a translucent panel system. And you can see, it actually was created with, apparently with a pattern, like to simulate the mountainscape or whatever. I don't really see it, but I don't really see it, but that's okay. So, but it has yellowed and aged. It hasn't really reached its life expectancy, yeah. So, you know, one of the things we're looking at is we're looking at preserving the interior structure of this system and going back in with a different type of system. So this is the concept that everybody liked at the initial meeting. You know, that translucent system lets a ton of light in. It's very uncontrolled and also lets a lot of heat gain in. So we want to correct that. So we want to control the light that we get into the space. Still have B light in the area. It is a library. But, you know, what affects books is sunlight, so we want to also control that. We also want to be able to improve the characteristics of the space, the acoustics of the space, and certainly the amount of heat gain that we get through this system. So what we had suggested was going back in with just a strip of translucent material. Now, this might be glazed, you know, glass material with a translucent inner liner, not the translucent panels like you have now which are the kind of resinous material. Because it's much, has a much better life cycle. And with the glazing technologies also can allow us to really control the transferance of heat through that system. So this was the initial concept to do it in the upper portion, allowing us to then look at different ceiling systems that we can put in to create better acoustic properties within it and also jazz up the space a little bit. That would be nice, make it something that's really cool. And then we're also going to be redoing the lighting associated. Right now, the lights are on those structural members that are feeding this system. I don't know that we saw that on the interiors app, so you can see the lights, the really attractive two lights that are in there. I'm being sarcastic, actually. And so we want to really improve that, improve the quality of the light and really make it match with the architecture of the space to a greater degree. So we've done some studies. We're doing some light studies to see how the light will flow from daylight all the way through the evening. And so we can look at that at any season and every part of the day. And then we're going to start to insert ceiling systems into this and come up with some concepts that we'll show you with how we think we might articulate the ceiling within that space.
Do you have any thoughts right now on the hard portion of that roof system?
For this, we're having that costed right now. So we needed to get to this point to say, okay, we're going to go with a more traditional roofing system for everything outside of the skylight and then we're also going to be costing the glazing as well. You know, the only change I would say is we might think about, at least on this end, eliminating the side glazing, but, you know, those are decisions we can make as we get further into the process.
You say traditional shingles or standing seam?
Probably more like a standing seam. So, you know, we want something that's going to give you a long life cycle cost. You know, we would have to do it, shingle would be, it just wouldn't fit.
Can I just ask, I know the cowl wall system is end of life. Have we ever had leaks in that structure?
We've had a couple of minor leaks in the actual structure. They kind of went away, but machines say...
So in 30 years, that cowl wall didn't leak?
Early on, it was 50 years.
It's 20 some years right now. It's, you know, 2001, so it's...
You got some life out of it. I mean, you know...
But there were some leaks on the north side of it where it ties into the existing building.
Flashing's always...
Flashing and stuff like that. Those were corrected. We have not really had any leaks that weren't related to large quantities of snow. When this gets a lot of snow on it, it all slides off onto the other roof.
Yeah.
The roof structure, when it was built, was actually reinforced to accept snow load of exorbitant amounts, so it was...
It was just a lot of water.
Yeah.
And does this account for those realities?
Well, here, when we go back in with, you know, a standing seam or more traditional roof system, we'll probably put ice catchers on it as well because it really does need it. You know, we'd like to try to limit the impact of sliding snow because that's what damages your roof below. So, you know, we'll take a different approach to that. Much like you would, you know, we do that with slate roofs, obviously, because once the snow starts to slide, you know, it can cause a lot of damage.
Moisture around libraries is a real problem because of the product you have there.
All those boats. Yep.
So I just want to make sure whatever solution we select, it continues to be leak-free like the system that's replacing. We're close to leak-free as far as...
Yeah. You know, the other part with the cowl wall is every one of those panels is a joint. It is subject to failure at some point in time. So with this, we're going to be eliminating a significant amount of the variation in the number of joints that are processed in the system and going in with a more monolithic system.
Yeah.
So that's the other advantage. But also, just again, better control of the thermal transference through, depending on the way that that space heats up and just better control over the light coming in that space.
You mentioned light control. Is there going to be a way to shield off those with the open panes?
So that's something we got to talk about. You know, right now, we're kind of showing like clear, but it wouldn't be clear glass because then you'd have such glare issues. And again, direct sunlight is what can hurt in effect books, so we certainly wouldn't want that. But they make glazing technology where you can get an inner liner that's a translucent white material and you can get it in all kinds of gradations. And so we, you know, could either have it change, create a pattern, or we can have it all monolithic. So we still have to look at that. That's kind of the next step. So it's going to be, and it's going to be very different look, which is going to be nice. And I think you coupled this with, you know, an entry feature at the front of the building and then the new loop. It's certainly going to be dramatic when people come to the school.
It's the only different profile feature we have. The rest of the roof's roll flat.
The rest of the roof's roll flat. So we want to take advantage of that. Wish it were better orientation. I wish it were oriented southerly because I would be talking about, you know, much different systems. We'd be capturing the sunlight or trying to put a solar panel system on there. We'd be capturing the sunlight or trying to put a solar panel system on there. But it really doesn't apply so well to that, so.
How old is this cell structure?
The cowl wall?
2001.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry?
2001.
Seventeen years.
2001, oh, so it was, oh, okay. It's not that old.
Fifteen years.
So, so we've been doing the evaluation of the HVAC systems, the high school. We've got some upgrades that we're doing. I reviewed this previously, but I did want to go through it just so people. So we're replacing the existing HVAC dampers. We're tying those into the, into the energy management system, your BMS system. This is all the, kind of the more boring stuff in the presentation. We're going to improve the heating for some of the storage spaces that were created in both the boys' and the girls' locker room. Because you do want to condition those spaces auditorium. We're going to replace the curtains. And then we're going to have a new projector and screening, which will be integrated into your AV controls. We're going to be.
Why would I be concerned about heating storage spaces?
So that was a change that was made. But what you store in those spaces, if un, if unconditioned, can be really affected in.
It's freezing cold in the, in those.
Yeah. So we're not talking about heating it to like the level we heat this.
So there's heat and everything in the locker rooms. And this is in other storage facilities?
Yeah.
So we're going, we're going to just condition it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, create a nice ambient temperature. It's to create a storage atmosphere so we don't have moisture issues where we could have mold or other.
It's really just a conditioned space.
Okay.
So, of course, we're going to look at your switch rack location. We're going to isolate this. So we're going to build, we're going to construct a wall at this location and isolate this switch rack so we can cool that space properly and separate it off from your boiler room. So nothing terribly exciting, but certainly a piece of the work. We're looking at placement of the generator on a new concrete equipment pan to provide floor coverage for the entire transportation building. And that one will actually, won't be connected to the existing propane tank. It will be connected to a new tank. At the middle school, of course, we're going to rehabilitate the basketball court. Certainly well in need of it, the one way in the back. And we're talking about some new fencing around the court area. And then also backup power generator at the middle school for all your communications and other systems. Again, more exciting stuff. So again, HVAC systems, but all very relevant. We're going to be removing all the remaining pneumatic portions of your system at the middle school. We're going to tie in new electronic controls into your building management system. Emergency lighting upgrades, I had mentioned that earlier. We're going to replace all those outdated battery operated units. And then we're going to have new emergency light fixtures. Because in portions of your middle school, your emergency or egress lighting isn't in all the areas that you need it that we would have to put it in today. Like stairwells and things to provide safe lighting for exiting the building all the way through the egress.
And all those lights you talk about are all LED, high, high efficient?
Everything we're talking about is LED.
All right.
Absolutely. The elementary school, the inadequate heating and cooling. I went through this. We've got, in the areas of red, we're going to replace the UVs with new UVs. We got an area of green, we're going to look at a combined unit with the UVs. And then in the blue is an existing room that doesn't have UVs that we have to install new, you know, ventilators in altogether. Because any area that's occupied has to have ventilation in. So we're going to correct those conditions. So this was just a summary of the classroom heating improvements. Again, we have to validate all the spaces that require it. We're going to have cooling upgrades for the art and music room, which are already air conditioned. We're upgrading that system. We got two classrooms and two offices that were created by partitioning of spaces. And so we have to have new unit vents for heating of those spaces. So we can't have it get unventilated spaces. And then for the two offices, we're going to have new unit vents for heating, cooling, exhaust stands for the ventilation. So all these are part of the upgrades. This is a little more detailed than what I presented last time because we're continuing to do further evaluations of each of these and coming up with more finite recommendations as we pursue the work. New air conditioning for all the offices requiring replacements. And then new chases that we're coordinating for areas containing more than one story. So anywhere where all this equipment runs between stories, we want to make sure that there's proper chase, chase ways for that, for that use. Everyone with me so far? It's not mug works or whatever, it's. So I spoke a little bit about our pre-design schedule, which we developed to get ourselves up to date with all the information on the district. You know, we did walkthroughs, we looked at your existing designs. We developed your, your building models for all the buildings. You've seen some of that, you've seen the models of the high school. We've taken all your buildings, we've put them on our Redditt. We've developed them as three dimensional models. And that's what we'll use to develop our, our construction documentation. And then moving forward, as I had presented before, we're scheduled to go to the education department in March, on March 1st. So we'll submit our plans and specifications and our anticipated compliance review and approval. We anticipate around September, we should be hearing from the education department about any things that they want us to address on the documents or our approvals. We'd like to bid it, you know, later in 2019. I'd say October, November, but it could be November, December. I think as long as we get bid sometime by mid-January, we think we're fine. Because we're well ahead of the cycle for those lining up their work for the summer. But right now, we're thinking we would like to bid between October, November of 2019. And then construction start there. I put April because we can begin some of that site work early, even before the students let off for the beginning of the year. We can certainly do, you know, a lot of different components of this while we're, while we're in spring. And then leading into the heavier things that are in the occupied portions of the building that summer and then complete by September, October, by the time we close out. But I think that was led to the hand.
Tom, do you have backlog in Albany? Is that kind of a little less?
Well, there's, you know, there's two backlogs now. Of course, there's the backlog for the traditional review cycle, which we're putting in for. But, you know, at some point, we may have to monitor and say, you know what? We need to consider a third party review. So a third party review has been running anywhere from 12 weeks, about 12 weeks, three months. The regular cycle, depending on how engineering heavy the project is, can be running up to 40 weeks. So, you know, that's something to consider. More people now are starting to shift their projects to the third party review. So we don't know how impacted that's going to be on the normal queue, but it must have some effect. But we're going to put in for the regular cycle and then monitor it throughout the beginning portion of the year. And if that queue doesn't, you know, if that queue doesn't change, then I will come to the board and recommend that we consider a third party review. And, and, you know, sometime in the middle of the year, that would still give us plenty of time to get our approvals with that, with that process. But if we don't have to spend the money, I would like to save it.
Third party review is additional cost to the district.
Yeah. It's not significant. And, you know, the whole concept was that if it eliminated having to lose a whole construction season, the cost of escalation far outweighs the cost that you'll spend on having this third party review.
It's a real cheap right now.
But I still think we monitor right now. If there's a change in the queue, we'll take advantage of it. But if the queue stays and remains the same, then I'll come and I'll recommend a third party review to keep ourselves on our schedule. So we right now have the best of both worlds. Because we're going to be well in advance of, of, you know, of having to worry about that.
This is a district question. Dan, with the middle school basketball court, does that use the?
Absolutely. As long as we're outside.
PE using it or?
PE uses it infrequently, but we're out there all, every time we can get outside for recess, there's kids on that basketball court all the time.
Is it always usable as far as not having problems we had in the past down there? Broken glass?
If there's any, we notice anything at all, it's immediately cleaned. But we haven't had any problems with it at this point. I know there's, there's people there after school.
Most recently, I've seen most of your lunch periods out in the front, you know, your coat wall.
Get on the field, right?
Well, I'm talking about the basketball court. I want to make sure that we're utilizing the facility and dumping more money into it and having it be a hangout for after school activities or weekend activities.
Kids go there for recess and play ball.
I've seen recess on the front, the front area of the school the last two or three months.
Right. We do it different ways. It depends on what's going on during that day. For instance, if Pete has his crew lining the lacrosse field, but we can be outside, we'll still use the basketball court. If the, if we've had a lot of snow and the basketball court is clear and we can get kids to the basketball court, we will use it. If the field is completely, if we, if it's pouring right now, we don't, we're not going outside anyway, so we're not going on the basketball court. It's, anytime that we can get outside on the fields, the basketball court is used. Sometimes it's the only place we can get outside.
And your rehab for the basketball court right now is just a top coat? Or you're going to do drainage and all of this stuff?
Right now, we're not scheduled to do drainage, but we're scheduled to take that coat, that top course off and then recoat it.
Remove and recoat.
Not just top coat.
Going back to the library, just a quick, you're reusing the existing structure, right?
Yes.
So that is rated for, right? There's a lot of additional weight going on with this. The ceiling underneath the floors and the roofing material, that is rated for all that?
Yes, and we're still, we're still having our structural engineer review the system, as well as each of the manufacturers. Because their systems are rated for a certain, a certain level. So we're still doing that.
I mean, four feet of snow plus the roofing material plus the ceiling.
Well, you know, yeah, that system, unfortunately with the slope, you probably won't ever capture four feet of snow. But, you know, we're still, you know, concerned about it because we will be putting better insulation values in that system. Because we're required to now by code. So we want to make sure that it can withstand the weight. And if we have to reinforce it, it's still much cheaper than taking that all down and redoing the whole system.
Just don't want to.
Yeah. I mean, if we replaced it in kind, we would avoid all of that. But I really don't think that's the right approach. We can make far, we can make a lot of other improvements to the quality of that space by thinking the approach we're taking and just doing a straight replacement.
As long as the weight bearing structure is there.
It's got my stamp on it.
How about the roofs that are at the bottom of that ones? Or comes up to the middle and lands in a pile on that flat?
So the, so the only time that the code requires a structural evaluation of the areas below is if the difference in elevation is more than six feet. Because they're talking about how much snow can, can actually drift. And so they're really looking at six feet and above where you start to perform that evaluation with a roof system replacing where you're increasing. Because the code now requires a minimum of 30, of our value of 30 minimum. It's not averaged anymore. So now we're starting with, you know, five and a half inches of insulation before you're doing.
Supposed to pull in that increased weight though?
Yeah.
Well, a number of years ago, we had a significant snowstorm and we were concerned about the amount of snow that was on the roof. And we actually had an engineer do a study on it to determine that it was substantial and far exceeded what it needed to be at that time from what it was designed when they did it.
Yeah, sometimes we have to upgrade it, you know, sometimes we don't really. It depends on how they, you know, it depends on the location. Again, depends on how much it could actually, how much drift you could actually predict. There is calculation for it in the code that we have to follow.
Tom, going back to option two for the parking?
Sure.
When the parents are exiting the school, would that be potential conflict with the buses coming in? Could that be an issue with the parents leaving and then the buses coming in? Could that?
Because you're using that same drive, that's what you're saying.
So for pickup.
When they drop off in the morning, so they're coming through that area in front of the e-admin section, and then buses are coming in? Could that be a potential blockage there?
No different than it is today. What's nice about the morning is the buses come in, you know, they trickle in. They come in a few at a time or one or two at a time. So it's a little bit of a different scenario. And so, you know, typically if a car got to that point, they would let the bus in. The bus at that point would have the right of way, depending on which direction they're returning. In the egress.
Right, when they're coming out.
When they're coming out, the buses should all be there before the parents are actually starting to load the cars up and exit the campus. These buses should already be in the queue spaces. And then they will then proceed out.
Yeah, I was just wondering with the parents, once they drop off and they're leaving, if there are buses coming in? I'm not sure what the flow looks like in the morning, but.
So, yeah, the buses will either, you know, make a right or a left hand turn. Left hand turn would be easier because then they just loop around. But cars coming out, you know.
Right, that area.
There will be some, you know, conflicts. But, you know, fortunately, you're not going to get, you know, 10 buses that come in all at once. Usually it's one or two at a time as they, you know, finish their runs, drop off the students, and then they depart. So, and that really unfortunately is no different than probably what you experience now. Because you're all coming through a common throat. But the difference being really that you have two, you know, the buses drop off in this separated loop and then we're combining it into that one. So that's one of the, you know, that's one of the, you know, kind of downsides to both options.
We talked about putting a box there though, right, Tom? And so the people wouldn't, theoretically, wouldn't stop and block the bus entrance?
Yeah, we talked about, you know, doing something here. And we also, also connected the walkout so then if you get across the room.
I don't know, like in the city.
Yeah, like a crosswalk, like a.
No, no.
Don't block the box.
Don't block the box.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we have to talk about which zone that was in. You know, this is kind of a, in both schemes, this is kind of a funny area. And like anything, it's, you know, for the first couple of months, it's going to just be adjustment.
Why don't keep the, in the second one here, eliminating the, what's currently, the car drop off? You said we're eliminating when the entrance is into the.
Yeah, so in this scheme, you know, right now, we have the existing entrance here and we have an entrance into the bus loop here. But to do this angled bus run, we don't have enough space with the old configuration. Yeah. I mean, that's a pretty short.
It's hard when you're, you're set to the parameters that are there for the most part. So I certainly appreciate the option one to.
It's a difficult, you know, it's a difficult problem. You know, look, I, both of them have, you know, advantages and drawbacks. And I think that's going to be true of any kind of solution. None of them are going to be the perfect solution. And all of them are going to have some compromise. And all of them are going to take, you know, an adjustment period. But like anything, after, you know, a few months, people will get used to understanding how the patterns flow and it will continue to improve.
Safety's paramount, that's why, you know, it's the redesign.
Right, and when this does happen, you know, I'm sure for the first couple of weeks, we're going to need to have personnel out there at different points to make sure people are following a new path, please.
Yeah. Because you're going to get parents that, you know, and I'm a parent too, so you're going to get parents that want to, you know, zip into the bus loop in the morning. And so you're going to have to post somebody here to restrict it to buses only.
One of those cool hydraulic doors.
Well, I know some districts that have arrangements similar to this where they actually put up barricades. And then they have in the morning custodial staff that let the buses in because they want to absolutely control it because they don't want that safety concern. So if anything, it's going to be an adjustment.
I'm going to want to hear Mr. Judge's recommendation on some of these options, I think.
Probably get Mr. Judge out there telling people where to go.
And get some vest wear.
That's safety vest.
Yeah, Bill's like, he's going to be up there.
Well, we're certainly open to, you know, to the comments and suggestions and, and all the input. Uh, that's what it really takes, it takes as much input as we can get to come up with a solution that really fits as close as we can get to, uh, to what's going to suit your needs. There's no pride of authorship, we don't have, I'm not married to any one of these options, I'm married to the option that you think is the best for you. In my, I'm just trying to point out, we're just trying to point out, the pros and cons of each allow you to make a really good informed decision. That's, that's really our goal. Okay, any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you very, very much. And you have this for the website, if you can post these.
So, yeah.
I sent them to you.
Great.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll move along. Second through reports. Do you resolve the board of education upon the recommendation of superintendent to the knowledge of reviewing the following reports? Meeting minutes, board of education meeting minutes for November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and audit committee meetings for November seventh, two thousand eighteen. Pope's curriculum report for quarter one, Pope's report for October two thousand eighteen for general fund, school lunch fund, special aid fund, and capital fund. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second, by Camille. Discussion?
Thank you for the self-protection report.
All good, all those in favor? Oppose, so carried. Under curriculum and instruction of principal reports, Joe.
All right, uh, I just want to draw your attention to my upcoming events. Um, it's not something you have to go to, um, but if you can turn your radio on, on December nineteenth at eight AM to ninety-two point one, our select chorus will be on the radio. Um, a Joe Daley's holiday series, so I want to thank, uh, our music teacher, Jody McCaffrey. She reached out and got our students a slot, so, and also want to thank, um, Kathy in transportation. She's going to make sure that there's a bus there to bring the students from, uh, the radio station back to school that day. So that's going to be interesting, if you can, uh, tune in, that would be great. Um, hopefully you can see the pictures, I know I talked about the book room before, but I gave you a progression of what, how we've labeled the books, how we're storing the books, and what the beginning of our book room is starting to look like. Uh, teachers were actually in there today, uh, reserving books for, uh, their lessons that are coming up. And then, just something to, uh, just bring your attention to, because you may hear that we'll be sending some letters out. Um, we were chosen, uh, to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, it's called the NAEP, on February twenty-eighth in grade four. So it's not something that we have an option, we have to participate. Um, but it is a voluntary thing, parents choose whether they're going to have their children participate or not. The other thing is I had to upload all of our fourth grade students into the portal and they randomized, they picked sixty-two of the students to take this assessment. The letters will be going home because parents have the opportunity to say whether they are going to have their child participate or not. But I only send letters to the sixty-two. So, um, there's a lot of questions that I have, but my phone call with the lady isn't until next week, so. Um, but I have my letter ready to go, I have some questions about if, uh, especially one of them is if parents say they don't want their children, but other parents get wind of it and they want their kids, can we add them in? For everything I've read so far says no, we don't get to select who the children are that participate. The randomization program, from what I uploaded, they get to choose, but that is a question that I'm going to ask. So, that letter should be going out shortly because I need to have word back from parents, uh, in early January because the test would be, uh, first, or the last day of February. So in case you hear about that.
Could we see a copy of the letter or, or?
As soon as I have my dates, I, I, I thought what, we're not going to have another board meeting this month, but I would give it to, uh, Mr. Bon Jovi and maybe he can email it out to you.
Email it out, that'd be great, sure.
Okay.
So if only half the students decide to participate, then is what it is, that was, you're going to take?
Right now, only sixty-two were chosen.
Right, and half of those will be a thirty-one.
Yeah, it doesn't impact us one way or another, it, it goes into the national registry, this happens across the country. So, um, how we would administer it is also quite interesting. I have, uh, every child that has been selected to take, um, some are taking the science portion on paper, some are taking the science portion on a tablet, some are taking the reading, reading portion on a tablet, some are scheduled for the math portion on a tablet. They're that descriptive, this is what has been chosen and that's how that child has to take that.
Then they're staying at work, they're seated.
And the location, I have to randomize the room. So my guess is if it's sixty kids, I'm not going to interrupt the, the rest of the school. I probably will run it in the cafeteria and Jen and I will run it. That's my guess, so.
About how long does it take?
Hundred and twenty minutes. Which is quite a long time.
One day, multiple days.
That's a long, right?
Over one.
One day, February twenty-eighth. There is something that says that there's an option in case we are closed that day. Um, but that's a question that I would also have if, for some reason.
Yeah, that's tough.
Yeah.
That's like asking kids to take an SAT in their fourth grade.
Right. I, I've never, I've never administered it before, I've never seen it done in any schools that I've ever worked in. So, a hundred and twenty minutes is what I, I have to allot, that might not be how long it actually takes. So, those are all, we have a list of questions that we're going to ask the lady when she gives us the call. But I had to do the, uh, I had to do some uploading, I had to recognize whether children have five oh fours or IEPs and that's what I had to input this week. The woman in New York State is on vacation this week, so the calls are going to be going out to, that, that was actually in her email. Don't call this week because she's on vacation, but she works all, all, yeah, she works all year long, so. So hopefully we have a, we have a phone call coming in the next week or so.
Is there no extended time for students, is modifications taken seriously?
I don't know the answer to that, yeah. I would think, but, I mean, I think, why would they ask me if a student, was a student with disability or a five oh four? Why would they ask me that if, if they weren't going to accommodate that? But they send you just very little information each time they send you something. The first thing was, you've been selected, upload your students to the portal. That took half a day, I did that. The next thing was, here's a red envelope and here's a card of how you're going to, uh, randomize your students when you have them in the room. Store this and don't throw it away till the end of May. Silly, it's a FedEx package like every other day, so.
So wait, have we ever, has Highland ever been selected before?
We did it in, in middle school about eight years ago.
Okay.
I don't remember it well, but we, it was the same type of thing, I think eighty kids of one grade took the test.
Right, and that was probably before tablets.
Yes, it was.
So.
It was all in paper, yeah.
So that's the big thing that we're working on right now.
Joe, if I could, yeah, just of the thirty-five teachers in GE, do you know the breakdown? How many have kindergarten, how many firsts?
Six in every grade level except for fourth, five.
Thank you.
It's an easy one.
I knew you'd know.
Anything else? All right, you'll get an email as soon as I have the final.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening again, um, I'll add, last year, if you remember, we had the after-school academy where kids stayed from two-thirty to four-thirty, was just a huge success for that group of kids. It has started again today, um, we're hoping to expand, I think we have fifteen kids today, but we are, we have invited more kids, we've broadened it a little bit. Um, we're hoping in, uh, to see more kids there and it'll run until the break and then start up again and run, uh, well and I think to the end of March this year, so.
Is there any busting that supports after-school?
For this program?
For any program?
Yes.
Do you have any busting, what do we have after-school?
We have a three-fifteen late bus that picks up and that's all the clubs and many, if there's meetings for sports, they'll ride. Um, some kids will stay after for extra lessons, music lessons, the libraries open, things like that. That's the three-fifteen and then this is, this group is supported with a bus at four-thirty. It's been one of the fantastic draws for this, we can get these kids home.
What has been our experience with that late bus this year? I haven't heard anything, so it's really everything's been fine.
Oh, it's been fantastic this year, we have.
Great job, same.
It's been, yeah, it's, it's been.
Joe, is it all right, is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, it's the team, it's the whole team.
All right.
Yep.
We have Linda Calvo and Sharon who organized it, they do a really good job.
No, it's, it's been, I don't know that we've had to cancel it, so it, which, it's been really great. Um, we, uh, our career fair was stupendous, you know, shout out to Megan, she did a fabulous job. And Heather, thank you for coming, I hope you enjoyed it.
Good job, Megan.
It was, it was really fantastic. I wrote my report, but I just want to say, I just stood back in the opening to the gym and as we have two big U's surround, you know, spread through the gym with, you know, close to fifty people there representing different organizations and jobs, I, I just stood and watched and the kids were highly engaged all the time. There was never one time that I watched a group of kids huddled over here having a conversation, not being involved. It was, it was tremendous, it, to watch it and see these kids just be so excited about what life has to offer, right? And how that carries over, it's really good stuff, so, yeah, that was, that's it, any questions?
I agree with you, Dan, I'm, I'm just amazed, uh, you know, I try to think back to when I was that age, I, that's amazing. The kids are thinking about that, at six, seventh, and eighth.
They're thinking about it. And you put it together with the presentation yourself tonight?
Yeah.
I want to come with your, that presentation, they're both very poised and engaging and, and very well done.
They're, and those compliments go to those teachers, they worked, I mean, and when they, when they say that everybody was involved, every, everybody was involved and we, and Kevin joked about the fear about kind of losing a little bit of the control. We had to work out strategies so we know where kids were. But when we had an English class, a science class, a tech class, and a social studies class going at the same time, those kids chose where they wanted to go and which teacher they wanted to work with to improve their presentation, right? That is what this is doing and it's really fantastic. We figured out our end and my, my belief is that I won't let the technology or the, the, those pieces stand in way of improving instruction.
I mean, I, I wish we had like a video clip of that day or, you know, something like that, not just to showcase here, but to put on our websites, because students do like to revisit those presentations and they're really big on video.
No, they're all, they, every, I believe every one of the presentations was recorded.
On our website?
We're not, we haven't moved them to the website, but we have them right now.
I got you, that's what I mean, yeah. Open up a YouTube channel.
Well, and here, and the other part of my report is the YouTube book review. We brought in somebody that, uh, trained our ELA teachers and our labor, library media specialist on doing a book review that would be put on a YouTube channel. In this case, a private channel that's not accessible, because we're not, we're not going to do that with kids, we're not going to put it out there right now in that way. Um, but that was very powerful to see different ways to do that with, with students rather than just the, you know, a written preview. Because kids, that's what kids are into, so. Any other questions?
Regarding the career fair, very much credit goes out to Megan, but also credit to those teachers. You could tell the students were really prepared in terms of, you could tell the ones that were nervous and they, you heard the same questions, but they do take it very seriously, it was very interesting to talk to them, it was, it was great.
I mean, work was done in classrooms and that's Megan too, getting out to staff and saying, here's what we want to teach these kids. They need to be taught how to look somebody in the eye and shake a hand, they really do. And, and it's done and you can tell, um, so it was fantastic. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, again, I'll be, have a few brief additions to my principal's report. Last Tuesday night was the Harlem Wizards basketball game, um, I'd like to, uh, probably thank Lionel Heath for organizing that. It was a success, there were more than four hundred and seventy-five tickets were sold. Proceeds will go to subsidizing the cost of the senior trip to Disney and for the senior boat cruise. Fun was had by all, except for my aging, aching body that went to the market days and days afterwards. Uh, so, and, so that was fantastic, it, it was a lot of fun. Um, also, this past weekend was the Canada trip. I'm going to call, I'm going to ask Mr. Judge to do a very brief summary.
Sure.
He chaperoned.
Bonjour.
Yes, bonjour. Uh, yes, I was one of the five adults chaperoning the fifty students to Quebec this past weekend and I just have to say it was really a heartwarming experience to see students apply every single academic area in a real-life situation abroad, increasing their cultural competency and gaining independence. It was, it was phenomenal, so on behalf of the teachers that planned it and the students involved, we wanted to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Judge, out of the fifty students, how many were freshmen?
The vast majority.
Forty-eight, forty-six of them?
Yes, I would say all, what about lives?
Yeah.
All of them here from upperclassmen how amazing Mr. Heath's trips are, I mean, he can't pass it up. A pleasure to maximize your experiences with Mr. Heath.
Exactly, you're, you're absolutely right. So I saw Mr. Judge said something about speaking on a bonus, all fifty freshmen, and I texted him, I said, wait, isn't it nine through twelve? He, well, the kids, he said, well, the majority are.
Yeah, it was probably five.
And so I looked it up, I said, ooh, there were, there were just a handful of upperclassmen, it was mostly freshmen, so. Um, thank you for chaperoning that. Finally, the Highland High School winter concert is next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow at six-thirty PM. I invite everybody there and there is a rumor that, um, Superintendent Bon Jovi, Mr. Dali Lamek, and Mr. Judge and myself will be joining the chorus for one of the, a classic holiday song. I heard, it's a little Bon Jovi singing that. But, um, we, we did go practice with chorus and we will go back again at least once this week, maybe next week to, uh, hone our skills. That's all I have tonight.
That needs to be on video.
Three of us going and then Mr. Dali Lamek said, oh, I know that, I, I can join in, so I'm, I'm going to hold her to that. That's next Wednesday night, a week from tomorrow in the auditorium, starting at six-thirty.
Tell all of your future, right?
I feel my voice is.
Oh, you'll be fine. We'll be the ones holding the music up there. Reading the song, but. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions for our directors, we have a bunch of them here this evening. Some of your director reports? Everybody okay? Move on. Okay, approval of committee on special education minutes. Do you resolve the board of education hereby accept the recommendation of the committee on special education according to the minutes of the CSE meetings of November fifth, ninth, fourteenth. The CSE, the amendment agreement, no meetings, October twenty-sixth, along with the month of November fifth, sixth, seventh, and fourteenth. CSE meeting, no meeting, transfer in, none to report. This committee authorizes the arrangements for such students' special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Tom. Questions? Any all in favor? So carried. Approval of committee on preschool special education, do you resolve the board of education hereby accept the recommendation of committee on preschool special education according to the minutes of CPSE meetings of November seventh and fourteenth. CPSE amendment, no meeting, none to report. CPSE, no meeting, transfer in, there is none to report. This committee authorizes the arrangements for such students' special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Ed. Discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, so carried. Personnel. If you take personnel at the block, uh, if you have any objection, we could do a standalone for whatever particular item number.
Standalone, eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Okay, uh, everybody okay moving everything else as a block? Can I have a motion, please, to move, it has a block from A one to and B to F. Moved by Sue, seconded by Tom. Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried. Uh, A three probationary appointment, do you resolve the board of education upon the recommendation the superintendent approves the following probationary appointment as presented to the board at this meeting. Francis M. Piscopo, position groundskeeper two, salary step four, thirty-two thousand, eighty-eighty-two, and the purpose is replacing Edwin Holder for retirement. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Mike. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Six-one. So carried. And we're now up to our speed prep.
So, my school has been quite busy this month. Um, most recently, clubs were asked to participate in the PTSA craft fair. Um, student council was asked to do what they normally do, which is the coloring table slash art and crafts. Um, and then that. Um, and then National Honor Society did a bake sale. Uh, the turnout was really great and was, uh, was very successful. Parents, I heard from a lot of parents, um, via social media, they private messaged me, and they were like, you know, it was a great idea to have students there to do the coloring table because parents could go shop and get some gifts that they needed, wrap the craft there, and they could leave their kids there to color, and it was great. Um, the athletes have advanced to the final four round of their single elimination tournament. Uh, they will be competing, well, they actually competed today after school, and they should know later on this week whether they moved on. I have full confidence in them. They're pretty great. Um, the Harlem Wizards game was a huge success. There was a large turnout from the community. Uh, twenty-two teachers played in the game, and from what I hear, it was very entertaining to watch. Um, the teachers also had a great time. I know Mr. Mango, I was chatting with him, he goes, it was a, it was a great experience, but he was definitely a little sore the day after. Um, students loved seeing their teachers getting involved, and it was just a great morale booster for most kids. Um, I can say that it was supported, uh, district-wide, and to see kids from elementary school now looking at middle school and high school teachers, and then the high school kids going, wow, remember that teacher from middle school or elementary school or even teachers they didn't have, and say, huh, I don't recognize you, but just getting to know each other was really great. Um, the high school students also went on a trip to Quebec City this past weekend. Um, from what I hear, Mr. Heath had another great trip. I mean, I haven't been on the Canada trip, but I have gone on other trips with Heath, and they're amazing. Uh, they visited the Huron Village where they ate sunflower soup and chatted with the people from the village. And they also learned about maple syrup and, uh, the Sugar Shack. I've never heard of any of that, so, but that's what I heard. It was really fun. Um, and then on Friday, the December fourteenth, interact members will be helping out, and they'll light up the hamlet event. Um, they will be there with Santa, taking photos of little kids, and talking with them about Christmas and what they want. Uh, the high school cheer will be performing as well, um, as the choir and band students. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Great report.
Thanks.
Okay, under business and operations, donation be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation, the superintendent graciously accepts the donations as presented to the Board at this meeting. Those, the donation made by Tech Inc., forty-two-inch nap whiteboard, valued at three ninety-nine. Donation made by the Highland Music Boosters Incorporated instrumental repair crew for high school valued at one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and seven cents. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ed, second by Mike. Discussion.
I'd like to thank the Music Boosters for this donation, and certainly for everything they do to help support the music program district-wide.
Absolutely. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Homonymity of agreement, Highland Central School District and the Highland Teachers Association be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation, Superintendent approves the stipulation of agreement to the Highland Teachers Association contract effective January one, two thousand nineteen, as presented to the Board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second, by Camille. Discussion. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Amendment, contract phase two, construction bid alternate award be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation, Superintendent approves the corrections to Doppel Construction and Optimus Construction contracts as follows. The high school bid alternate for roof, Doppel Construction, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. Middle school bid alternate for roof, Optimus Construction, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Discussion.
So, when we approve these, and we already approved these, but they were accidentally, the numbers were reversed. They were reversed, so we have to have a correct, um, award, so all the paperwork's in order.
Right, we approved Doppel for one ninety-five and Optimus for four seventy-six, so it's a happy flip.
So, these two whole assets, they don't get anything?
Correct.
They're not going to be the final amounts?
Correct.
Right.
They don't get four thousand five hundred?
No.
They're not going to respond anymore.
No.
Non-resident tuition rates, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation, Superintendent authorizes the following two thousand eighteen, nineteen estimated non-resident tuition rates presented to the Board at this meeting. Graves K through six, regular education, nine thousand eight hundred and fourteen, special education, forty thousand, zero, zero, eight. Grade seven through twelve, thirteen, regular education, thirteen thousand, two, five, five. Special education, forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Ed. Discussion.
Are we sure those numbers are accurate? I never, I don't recall seeing such a large disparity.
This is, the information was released from the state on November twenty-seventh, and as soon as we received it, I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, leave company.
Yeah.
I think it usually is pretty different.
Yep.
Are these not somebody approved every year?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, they change every year based upon the data that we, we report.
Okay.
Yes. Yep, they change every year based upon the data that we, we report.
Okay, any other discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Smart School Agreement with Day Automation be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation, Superintendent approves the following agreement relevant to Smart School Investment Plan to the New York State Education Department of Day Automation Systems Incorporated at a price not to exceed six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Heather. Discussion. All of the favor?
I had a question, sorry. So, this is awarding, is Day Automation the work?
Yes.
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 We just got approval from state ed, right?
Right.
That's how they can award the contract. I believe, correct me, Mr. Miller, that they have started preliminary work even prior to our resolution tonight?
They've done planning work and putting together, um, materials list. They haven't done any purchasing or anything until this is approved.
The attorneys have reviewed all the agreements. So, do we plan on having them come in to do a presentation at a board meeting or something, somewhere down the road?
The next thing we're going to get out of them is a, um, a project planning list.
Okay.
And both of them.
Timeframe and that?
Timeframe and everything, so we know where we're at, and then once we have an idea of when delivery materials is and that type of thing along with that timeframe, we can probably have some sort of a, um, planning presentation.
Okay.
Sure. Any other discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Change orders. I believe I have to go through the individuals on, because they're taking over the block.
Can I just explain before you start?
Yeah.
So, obviously, we're trying to close out the project.
Yes, presumably.
Um, some of this, some of the, um, dollar amounts represent, um, charges against the allowance. I'm sure you understand that every contract has an allowance amount, and it's different for every contract. Some of these change orders are just against the allowance. Some are ju, against the allowance drawing down, and if there's any allowance remaining, either positive or negative, it will be adjusted against the final contract. So, basically, this is the next step in closing out all of the construction contracts for your project.
So, Lisa just, I'm reading this correct, going through them all. The only one that exceeded their allowance was mechanical construction.
That is correct. Yep.
Well, every other contractor did not exceed their allowance, so we're getting credit back for the remaining allowance.
Yep, and the, the one that exceeded is item twelve. Hudson Valley. There will be more coming, um, but this is the batch that we had.
They were involved in a lot of additional work.
There will be more coming.
What?
No.
Yep.
The two, the two significant issues in Hudson Valley ECNM. The twenty-four eighty-nine and thirteen six forty-three were engineering emissions.
I guess my only question at this point in time is, why at the end of the project were we seeing so many change orders and we haven't seen them throughout the project? Is there a reason for that? I mean, they, they're doing the work prior to an approved change order, from what I, I'm gathering.
Yeah, I would imagine all this work, all of it's done.
Yeah.
And I can only speak from what I know for the past two months. So, in trying to close out the project, um, we had a meeting with the contractor and the construction manager and the architect. We went through each contract with the, all three parties in the district, and we viewed outstanding work. Apparently, it had not been memor, memo.
Immoralized, right?
Thank you, that's the word I'm looking for. And we pushed it to get completed. What I noticed, going back in the previous four minutes, which is where I found the reversal of the award last December, is that it was being brought to the Board, the, um, contingency allowances.
Right.
I, myself, had never had that experience before, hence all of the contingency allowances on tonight's agenda and the change order deducts. I think you'll see more of those. As to why they weren't done previously, I don't know.
Sounds like time might have been a factor.
Well, I think that.
Opening schools, get a jump on the summer.
Well, I think the things with the, the contingency and the allowances and things is somewhat legit. The issues that we had with HC, HC and HP ECNM were, there was actually directive memos from the architect to complete the work, but it wasn't followed up on a timely basis with an actual change in.
That's what it appears to be, timely.
Is there any work here that was complete that you were, that you're concerned about still, or it's time to just close this out?
We're still touching up a few things. We're, we're okay at the moment.
In the end, the majority are in the allowance, and I think that's a good, good place to be.
Right, but there's, you know, there's, there's a few punch list items and things like that that are hanging out there, but nobody's abandoned us yet.
Right.
And you've got some change to deal with that, right? You got some coin out of this project still to deal with?
Yes, we still have the retainages because no contract has been closed out.
Hey, one A hasn't been covered out yet?
He's.
That, that's two years ago.
Yes, that.
One A was, yes.
Yes, that was.
That was, okay.
Yep.
And one B was closed out in May-ish.
And one B, this is, this pulls out one B, middle school, senior high, junior high, and the bus garage. There's four project numbers involved.
Okay. So, we'll take this as a block? All right with that? Any other questions?
I don't think you're going to.
No, I didn't.
No. No.
I know you.
I can assure you I've been through this frontways, backways, sideways. I, I've slept. I woke, I've broken it.
You saw those three P-traps on the existing pipe?
It's interesting.
Lisa just, out of curiosity, the ones that exceeded the, the allowance, did it exceed by a lot or?
No. No.
Okay. All right, can we have a motion to accept the change order as a block? Motion by Ed, second by Camille. Any further discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much.
Now you got to write people, or sign them out.
Yep.
Just wants it off the desk, it sounds like.
For the very.
Take a lot of my time, I guess. Okay, um.
Well, we have the superintendent's comments. Yes, so I now, I'll pass this down. This is the agenda, uh, on the seventh, which is this Friday. It is a half-day professional development, uh, so, some of the highlights. Uh, so I'm really incorporating Mrs. Dudley Lemic, I have family obligations tonight, going to incorporate her report and then just do my report. So, Mrs. Dudley Lemic, some of the highlights, we are getting a presentation from NAMI, which is National Alliance on Mental Illness. They'll present to the Middle School staff on suicide awareness and prevention. It's called Ending the Silence. Uh, one of our attorneys, Jim Rowhan, will be presenting to the high school staff legal updates. This was actually a presentation that Mr., um, yeah. Mr. Zimmer and I, uh, saw, uh, at a safety conference that we went to, and it was, uh, very good. Dana DeStacy, our ENL teacher, presented to the middle school staff on trans languaging and the importance techniques for ENL students. Uh, we can do continued work on our foundations phonics program and readers and writers workshop initiatives at the elementary school. Uh, the TAs will receive further training from BOSI's behavior intervention team on promoting independence in student academic and social development. Sarah also attended, uh, BOSI's training on new mental health standards. So, Derek State is the only state in the country to adopt mental health standards. Uh, there'll be a big emphasis on the recognition and support of mental health. Um, there'll be expectations that PE plays a role in mental health wellness as well as physical wellness. There'll be a call for continued collaboration between the district and community resources, as well as between the districts and the county on mental health support. The Health Family Consumer Science teachers attended a full-day training opposed on the December fifth to look at ways to integrate these standards into our current curriculum and to learn about further resources available to schools and students. And we will continue to find training opportunities to staff throughout the year on superintendent conference days and faculty meetings. We're certainly, we're continuing to work on teacher observations, especially on the non-attended teachers. So, we're excited to be in the classrooms and see our initiatives in action. Again, just a mention again to, uh, the middle school, but a special shout-out to Mrs. Connors for her work on the Career Day. Big thanks to the Town of Lloyd Police, specifically Chief Agent Sergeant Rollison for facilitating our tabletop drill we did last month. And then, uh, from Mrs. Dudley Lemic, certainly her adults, Mrs. Bragg family. Uh, you know, Mr. Bragg left an indignant mark on the higher school and community, and, um, and it will be difficult to imagine our memorial day ceremony, just without Mr. Bragg there with his ruseful voice, just as pleasant. Continuing with my report, uh, next Thursday, December thirteenth, we're doing another Narcan training here at the high school. So, I do, uh, Hopeman E. Board Member also. There's two sessions. There's one at eleven A.M. and then one at one P.M. It'll be right here at E thirty-two. We have about, about, we, last year, we did two sessions, we probably, uh, trained between thirty and forty people, and we're on about forty people. This year also, different people train. So, uh, we have a large contingent from the, um, uh, Transportation Department also taking part in this. So, uh, that same night, just for the board and the public, is also at six P.M. at the Public Library here in the Highland. Narcan training from the same group. So, three opportunities for Narcan training in one day. Today, actually, uh, we did a surprise safety inspection of the three buildings. That was Chief Wade, Sergeant Rollison, Detective Ventura, and myself. Uh, the schools all, uh, you know, came back with high marks from Chief Wade and Sergeant Rollison. They just had a few, uh, minor suggestions, um, but it was great. Uh, you know, doors were locked, you know, everything was in its place, so, uh, you know, really great. And thanks to Chief Wade, Sergeant Rollison for doing that. Uh, we also, it's, it's, I'll have more information as we get a little closer. Just a lot of things that we're doing. We have an internet safety, uh, briefing that's been moving in March. And I'll be, there'll be a presentation to the middle school one day, high school another day, and there'll be an evening pre- and there'll be an evening presentation for the parents. Internet safety, that's not until March, we did wanna mention it. I'm also working with Rotary, it's always been, and it's, it's every school district. It's tough to get people out at night. So Rotary is gonna work and I'm gonna put some incentives for the parents to, maybe some prizes, hopefully to help with the parents for that.
An idea, so internet safety is one thing, but I know, you know, Verizon's right here in the plaza, would they be willing to send a rep to talk about parental controls or safety of student cell phones or anything like that? I think the cellphone piece might be a big draw for parents. They all have them, but what are they doing on them? What does the conversation go like? Verizon might be able to help us out with that.
Okay, great.
Going back to your Narcan training, like you said, it is hard to get parents and people out at night. Would the Narcan training at eleven AM or one PM be open to any students? I do think that's very valuable for them to know as their friend group might partake or people that they may know partake in those activities. Do you think that that can be open to students?
I'll discuss with Mr. Zimmer. Thank you, Kristen.
I certainly, you know, I also attended Mr. Bragg's funeral. It was very touching and just also funny to hear some of the stories. We will be missed. Certainly, this is our last, we have all the concerts coming up. So the middle school concert is Thursday night. The high, the elementary concert is next Monday. And then the high school's next Wednesday, so it's a busy, it's a concert season. So certainly, perhaps myself, it's Dr. Lemick and the Central Administration. I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, given that it's still a rule early, but we won't be meeting again until January. That's all.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, Board of Education, new business, also County School Board Association, FYI. Meeting is December fifth at six PM tomorrow evening. Tomorrow night. Okay, old business update from, of our two thousand fourteen capital budget. Lisa, we have to get this from up there.
As you can see, we are in the process of closing out each of the contracts. We're hoping to have that completed by next week. I'm cautiously optimistic that will happen. We will also be meeting with representatives from Bernie Donigan's office to ensure that the reporting to the state is made, is completed correctly for the final cost reports.
Once we know the final cost report, you'll be able to give us?
Yes, a financial-
A financial snapshot of where we are in terms of excess funds from the two thousand fourteen-
Yes.
Yeah, there will be excess funds.
There will be funds removed.
Is that correct, twenty fourteen?
Yep.
Capital?
That's when we passed it.
That's when we bonded it, sorry.
That's when we passed it.
Yes. Now we're just getting into the very nitty-gritty final accounting. Dot A V I across everything, make sure that you maximize your state aid by balancing your construction costs with your incidentals.
And is Ashley McGraw all paid out at this point?
I don't believe so.
So at some point in time, once Lisa has the opportunity to provide that information, we'll have some discussion on what we wanna do with those excess dollars applying to, I believe we can apply them to our current, on the two thousand eighteen-
I would defer that to our financial advisors.
Or-
Yes.
To put the standalone projects, I'm not sure how that actually-
Yeah, I'd love to know what restrictions that money comes with or not.
Yes.
Or not, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the standalone needs requirement of a design professional to redesign the project and, you know, do all that and just piggyback it on the current eight million dollar project.
We'll find that out. We'll find that out.
I have some idea that we hadn't gave up on that.
Yeah.
And my advice is to-
Yeah, I mean, we're not sure if those dollars are- Okay. So that's update, anybody have any questions on the project? Smart school spending, discussion on our phase two of our Smart School Investment Plan proposal? I think everybody has that in front of you.
Obviously, this is a PowerPoint that's in lieu of the time. Very short, concise, four slides. This is phase two. We had a wonderful board retreat on November seventh and we discussed the plans for phase two funds. The first slide, obviously, is introduction. The second slide states it was approved by the voters in November twenty fourteen. If you flip the page over. The third slide reviews the discussions from November seventh. The district will look into purchasing new interactive boards for the classroom across the district and replacing those that are potentially seven years old. I believe that Ms. Podash found out that the boards that we have currently are being phased out, end of life, and there will be something new next year. So she's in the process of obtaining estimates as far as how much the replacement boards will be. Last slide, what happens next? Again, this is just a brief recap from the November seventh meeting. It can be approved by the board at the December fourth or your January fifteenth. It will be posted on our website. Apparently, we have to provide Suneen Newholtz with a letter stating what we are going to do with the remaining funds and then we will submit the phase two online to SED. It would be my recommendation to the board, because we don't know what the costs are since this unit has reached end of life and it has yet to be replaced. Perhaps we'll know more information in January.
Yeah, 'cause you get locked into the dollar amount, don't you?
Yes. So, you know, with technology changing, obviously, the work is not going to happen this summer, so we had some discussion as to when the work will occur. So, right now, we're in a good spot. We can focus on our phase one, we sign the contract and in the meantime, grab, gather more information. But we thank you very much for your input from the board retreat on November seventh.
Well, let's not delay too long after January, so we can get into the study.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we don't, this phase obviously doesn't need design, it's like saying-
Correct. Correct.
Is there an idea of what the timeline is, that they'll say we can move forward with it?
Well, that was quite a concern of ours because there's supposed to be a set schedule from the, as to when they meet at the state and so far, they have not met.
They haven't met since two thousand fourteen when they have to bond up.
Right. They were directed by the state to have a schedule and they have not set a schedule yet. So that's a brief update. But thank you very much for your input.
Okay, so we'll hold until January, or January eighth through this, but like Ed said, let's try not to go any further than that. Because every, every day we waste is a day longer, it takes them a little-
Another six months of the state.
Yeah, right.
Wanna get these exciting-
Yeah, thirty days could be two hundred days in the queue. Okay. Anything for the good and welfare of the district? Open it up to public comment. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Tom, second by Mike. Discussion?
Merry Christmas.
Yes. Happy holidays to everyone. So we won't see you now for January.